Hello, group. It's 4 o'clock and today is Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020. We're joined today to have a discussion on tuition models. I'm going to call roll in a minute here of all board members. As usual, for the record, I do know that Mr. Hendrix thought he might be delayed by a minute or two. And there he is. Okay, so I think we're all present. Want to remind people before I call us to order that again, we do have mute buttons which are helpful and there's always dramatic pause after someone is called upon to speak or before they speak as they take themselves off mute. So we'll all be patient with that. Secondly, I know that these remote meetings are difficult for robust conversations, but I think we've been doing a good job and want to thank everyone for that. Board members, I will continue to go down the list of individuals to ensure everyone has an opportunity to speak. But as we get into exchanging question and answers or building on each other's comments, it does, it is a little more difficult than if we were all present, but I've been encouraged by how everyone has managed that. So I want to thank you and we'll continue along that vein. And then the other one is not for any other reason other than to remind us all that we're here to discuss this item at a strategic level, not an implementation level particularly. And I know sometimes we tend to get very detailed in our conversations. Our goal is, particularly as board members, is to stay at the policy and strategic direct level. And we'll always strive to do a good job in that area. And I'm sure that will be where we will take this conversation today. So with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order and call roll. And I'll start with Alejandro Maya. Ms. Maya?
Present.
Thank you. Then Mr. Hendrix?
Yes, present.
Ms. McGrath?
Present.
Dr. Norene?
Present.
Mr. Sarr?
Can you hear me?
Now. Hi.
Okay.
Dr. Thor?
Present.
Ms. Nguyen?
Present.
And the record will note that there is a full complement of board members with Marie Sullivan in attendance as well. So with that tuition work session, we've received PowerPoint or copies of presentations. We have last week's information as well as the one most recently sent. We'll be pulling that up on the screen as well, I believe. And with that, Dr. Gonzalez, I'm turning this to you.
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board, CEC, guests that are with us virtually. Again, we thank you for the opportunity to participate in the conversation regarding an opportunity to provide discounted tuition models. As you stated, last week, we presented a plate full of models. I think there were nine in total. And as a result of that discussion, it seemed that the direction that we were given was to further hone in on models that were identified as 6A and 6B. And I'm going to turn this over to Carla shortly to go with the, go on with the presentation. And we look forward to continued conversation and dialogue and getting to a place where we can land on something that we can begin to implement. I want to thank Dr. Fisher and her team that have spent quite a number of hours and time and energy to develop this model in short order and to Gary and Jim and their team as well for providing the financials behind that. So with that said, thank you again, and I'll turn this over to Dr. Carla Fisher, our provost.
Good evening. I'm Carla Fisher. I'm the provost of the Maricopa County Community Colleges District. Ms. Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of the CEC and guests. Thank you once again for the opportunity to address the board. When we came together last week to talk about how we could support our students through a variety of ways. One was about tuition reductions. And we took away from that direction to go back and think about how to implement a tuition reduction in the fall and spring of this coming FY21 academic year. Next slide, please. What we heard at the budget work session on June 26th was a variety of options. The board gave us, I heard, direction to go back and really dig into how might we implement what we were terming 6A and 6B. 6A being a 50% reduction in the per credit hour tuition flat rate or tuition cost plus a flat rate full-time for 12 hours for all students in the fall of 2020. And 6B, a 25% reduction in the per credit hour tuition plus a flat rate full-time for 12-plus hours for continuing students only. Again, looking at continuing students to drive that academic momentum. Those that completed in the fall of 2020 and have continued with us in spring 2021. So the team took these items back and began to think through all of the different ways that we might implement these particular options. Of course, they're not the only options on the table. And, but certainly the ones that we were directed to get started thinking about how to make real. Next slide, please.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, Dr. Thor.
I just want to comment at this point before Dr. Fisher continues with the presentation. That it is correct that a week ago, there did seem to be some consensus around 6A and 6B. However, in the week that's passed, I have received lots and lots of comments and given a lot of thought to this myself. And I'm at this point not prepared to support 6A and 6B. So I just wondered whether it might, we might want to do a check-in first before Carla, Dr. Fisher goes through all of this presentation. And it may be that we need to hear it and then talk about what other, whether we're still supportive of this or what other paths we might want to go down.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. I think it's kind of a blend. Let me first ask, before I would ask board members, ask Dr. Fisher. Dr. Fisher, are there any general guiding principles, particularly on the, given the page we're on, that would be pertinent to anything for us to consider in any models going forward? Or are these guiding principles particularly or specifically tied to what you were looking at? So, or anything else in this presentation that's more general before we talk about specifics?
Sure. So Ms. Sullivan, members of the board, these implementation guiding principles, we believe, are universal. However, we want to go about supporting students through tuition support, through scholarship, through our CARES funding, even anything that we do. These are things that we think we should bear in mind. And so it seems to me if there's questions about other kinds of ways that we might want to support students other than 6A and 6B, I mean, I'm happy to continue through, but it might make the conversation richer even about these if we could hear what those other ideas were. Certainly, our staff has had lots of conversations about ways that we could support students moving forward. So I throw that out there, but of course, it's your pleasure. I will continue on if you'd like me to.
Well, I appreciate everyone, your comments and certainly, Dr. Thor, your comments. I wanted to ensure that we understand that regardless of whatever models we talk about, either continuing on with 6A and 6B or new ideas, which I believe there are several, then we want to make sure that we keep in mind these guiding principles. Because certainly, I know that was one of the things that we honed in on as we began to think about 6A and 6B last week. And as we move forward with any new ideas, we would want to ensure that we were still paying attention to those. So thank you, Dr. Fisher. And I don't want to interrupt your full presentation, but I think I'm going to. And again, reminding us, we want to be talking strategic models, not detailed, details. Dr. Thor, let me start with you then, and then we can go of any ideas you have. And then I will call on each board member to see if they want to go forward with 6A or 6B or if they have their own ideas or other ideas again that are strategic in nature.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. As I think back about our discussion last week, we started with the proposal to eliminate tuition altogether. And I believe that there were a number of us, or perhaps even the majority of us, that didn't like that idea. So began to kind of find where is the compromise? Without, in my opinion, really thinking through what is it that we're trying to accomplish here? And what is the best way to get there? I did reach out via social media and other ways to ask for reactions from people to the proposal of a 50% reduction in the fall and a 25% reduction in the spring. And frankly, I was quite stunned. I probably heard from 40 people. I would say two-thirds were in opposition. And without taking a lot of time, I want to share just a few of the comments. One being, what does the data say? Have we surveyed students to ask what the barriers are? And that reminds me of Mrs. McGrath's request from last week that we looked to see if something similar has been implemented at another time elsewhere in the country and what were the results. Another said, I don't see the point. A large number of students get Pell Grants, so they're not spending their own money to come to school anyways. I do not believe what is driving the enrollment decline is money, but rather fear, uncertainty and doubt. Lowering tuition won't impact that, but will impact the financial ability of Maricopa to respond to students' needs. Another said, I don't think tuition is the barrier to students. We're already one of the lowest in the country. The barriers are basic needs, the job card, food, job insecurity, childcare, laptop, internet access. The more we can help with those things, the more enrollment we'd see. Another said, we should target the money in forms, in the form of scholarships to those that really need it rather than universally lowering tuition at an unsustainable rate. Another suggested addressing the healthcare programs to see how we could streamline them, avoid the wait lists, provide effective career assistance. She said, I think that'd be more appealing to the students that I interact with. And then finally, and another made the point that if we lower tuition now and then raise it back up to a regular rate, that students, rather than viewing it as a 50% reduction, will view it as a doubling of the tuition in the future, which may affect our retention down the road. And then finally, GCU and even public universities have huge marketing budgets promoting their programs. If we had money to get the word out that we have great programs, graduates getting jobs, that our tuition is $85 a credit hour compared to 600, I think we'd increase enrollment. It's not $85 keep tuition, keeping students away. It's a lack of knowledge of what's available. So it was these, these kinds of comments that made me, you know, just stop and say, is this the best way to support our students at this, this time?
Thank you. Before, so that's a generic, a general question, obviously. But I wanted to go back to one of your things. One of your, your key points was data and other schools. Dr. Fisher, before we move further, do you have any comments on that?
When we spoke last, we talked about other institutions that might be doing tuition decreases or scholarships in order to drive enrollment. The four colleges that we talked to, actually, the California schools are doing some sorts of promotions. Tennessee, Texas and Iowa. And each, in each case, it's a much more systemic rather than a short-term kind of approach. It's systemic, it's sustainable, and it requires students to engage with mentors or advisors or groups in different ways to help them stay engaged with their work at the institution. Also with requirements around their satisfactory academic progress, that being GPAs and attendance. So very different kinds of programs rather than sort of a short-term promotional tuition discount.
Okay, thank you. So, Dr. Thor, you laid out a rhetorical question. I guess what I want to find out from other board members, do any of you board members want to go forward before we get into new ideas with 6A and 6B as this presentation? And just speak up if you do. I'll give you a minute here to unmute if you have comment on that. Okay, so far, I'm not seeing anyone unmute. So I guess that would tell me that we want to go forward with talking about other things then. I'm sensing that's the direction. So, um, so rather than go alphabetical, I'll go as I see you on this roll call here. And that would put you first, Mr. Sarr.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
All right. I got a new computer, just trying it for the first time.
Yeah, that's good.
And I'm gonna, next Tuesday afternoon, I'm gonna get a headphone, so you know.
Okay.
My questions, I guess, on these guiding principles that I don't see answer.
Uh-oh. Am I the only one that lost him?
Hello?
I lost you for a minute. Go ahead.
My question is, it, does this include clock-hour students?
Ms. Sullivan, Mr. Sarr, the financials that you see in this presentation do not include clock-hour students. Certainly, we could provide some sort of similar model for them. But we were looking specifically at credit students for this particular presentation.
Well, you know that that's a passion of mine, so.
I do.
I wouldn't go with any tuition change unless it includes all of our students, all of our resident students, I should say.
I'm not surprised to hear you say that. Given the short timeline in putting this together, we decided to go with the more simple model, simply to prove it out. And then if we need to work that through into credit hour students or clock-hour students, certainly that's doable.
Okay, and, you know, regarding Mrs., Dr. Thor's comments, I appreciate those. And I've heard some of the similar responses. But in the end, I really do think that our students are struggling financially. Now, especially, not all students, of course, but especially those students that we want to bring into our educational endeavors. Because they're the ones that are going to make a difference in our economy here in Arizona if we can move them into a higher economic level. So I'm not going to buy the fact that, that economics aren't keeping them away from us. I get the whole marketing thing, don't get me wrong. But students know about us, but they're struggling to keep their mortgages paid or their rent paid and their food on the table for their families. You know, the average age of our students, 26, 27 years old. That means for every 18-year-old, you know, there's a 36-year-old. So we got to start thinking about those specific students that we want to bring into our institution. And I really think that financial barriers are important. And doing what we're trying to do today, I think, is as good a solution to bringing students back and making our enrollment where it needs to be. So all that blah, blah, blah. Bottom line is, I'm still okay with 6A and 6B. But I do think that, you know, it's about the details and how it's implemented, of course, and that we have people that are good at doing that. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone you would like to comment about now Mr. Sarr's statements? Okay, I keep waiting for that unmute by anyone. Okay. Yes, Ms. Maya?
I'm adding on to what Mr. Sarr said. Yes, students know about, the Maricopa colleges are here, but sometimes they don't know about the programs. Just like ASU and all these public institutions are promoting their, that they're there, yes. But they, sometimes we don't know about how these programs that are available and these opportunities. So I think it's important to find other ways to promote our various programs that we offer.
And what is your comment about the financial incentive?
I honestly, I would need to know more, a little bit more information about it.
So as, okay, so 6A and 6B had an upfront model, 50% first year, first semester, 25% if you're continuing. Mr. Sarr's mentioning that finance or tuition is an incentive for more students in recruitment. You're commenting about the marketing to other programs. And Dr. Thor has mentioned that there are other considerations. Do you have any reaction to any of?
I like Dr. Thor's idea about offering some sort of program where we offer scholarships for people to apply that actually need the help. I think there's, they are, there are students out there who can pay for it. And again, just like the, um, the Emergency Fund Act that was going, that has been going on, for students to apply if they really need the help, so we can help them with their, with their education.
Got it. Okay, any other comments on either of those two? If not, my next, I'm scrolling down here on the attendance list. So Ms. McGrath, you're up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I keep wondering, are we unique or is this happening across the nation? Is there anything at all that works? Perhaps there isn't. Perhaps we need to face reality. We're beginning to drop in enrollment for a while and we need to get ready for that. I'm very concerned about if we're coming up against the amount of money that we can spend. I'm drawing a blank on the name for it now, the level of spending we can spend for each student. And with our drop in students, we're gonna be having a hard time with that. You know, we talked about doing this program and that program, but has anyone ever checked to see if it's done anywhere? And what is other colleges across the nation doing? We don't move the reinvent the wheel every time we turn around. And I kind of feel we have something to do, go off on our own and come up with all the ideas. And I'm certain that with, I don't know how many colleges there are across the nation, but credit few. But I think there's a good chance that someone else has figured out that A, there's need help or B, there's help and he is. Thank you.
You're welcome. Dr. Fisher, can I go back? Someone wanted to speak. I was gonna have Dr. Fisher. Could you give us one more example, but before I, one of the schools you surveyed? But before I do that, Dr. Gonzalez, sorry, excuse me.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. If I respond to Mrs. McGrath's question, she brings up a good one and wondering what is happening across the country. And Mrs. McGrath, there are nearly 1,100 community colleges across the country. You know, nearly every major city and many small rural areas have a local community college. All right, I came across a study that was done yesterday, or I'm sorry, I came across a study yesterday that was done recently. And 21% of the colleges that responded are experiencing an enrollment for the fall semester that is greater than 20%. And 31% of those colleges surveyed are experiencing 11 to 20%. So that combined is almost half of the colleges in this survey. And this was a survey that was done across the country are experiencing enrollment declines of 31 to 21%. I read an article today that was specific to for-profit colleges who are actually seeing enrollment boost from the newly employed. And specifically, they cite that their target population, and it says here, I'm reading from this article, unlike traditional four-year colleges, many for-profit colleges cater to older working class and minority student. That, that's a very similar definition of our student. As Mr. Sarr indicated, that our average age is around 24 to 27 years old. So it just depends on the, on, on, on whether it's a for-profit or if it's a university. But we seem to be fairly consistent with what other colleges are currently experiencing in summer and fall enrollments.
And along that line, are they offering comment about how they're encouraging more enrollment? Or are they just spacing it without doing any other adjustments?
I'll quickly scroll through that study as we continue this conversation to see if that, that question was asked in the study. But I immediately pulled that up when Mrs. McGrath asked about what other colleges are experiencing. And having just remember hearing, reading that. I also know that from a couple of our colleges that conducted some student surveys that at 40 to 50% of their student population has experienced total job loss, around a minimum, some loss of income related to work.
Mr., Dr. Fisher, before I go on, can you pull out, you mentioned that there were some.
Yes, Ms. Sullivan. We, we looked at other institutions that are doing similar, well, reductions anyway for, for their tuition or scholarships for tuition. Again, those were longer-term programs. Didn't find any that were particularly focused, as this one is, on short-term economic and student support. And I guess that's the question that we wrestled with as staff as well. When we say, you know, what works in this space? I think the question has to be, what's the goal? What are we trying to get to work? Are we trying to support our economy? Are we trying to support individual students? Are we trying just to boost our enrollment? Is this a promotional campaign? Maybe it's all of those things, but it's, it's difficult to sort of define what works until we know what we're encouraged to do. And it sounds to me, as I listen to the board in the work session as I'm listening today, that maybe there are a variety of goals that we have. If driving enrollment is the single and primary goal, that's certainly something that we can point at. If it is broader than that and we're trying to do several different kinds of things, I think that makes it a more nuanced conversation.
Thank you. Any comment from Ms. McGrath or Diana Sarr or Dr. Thor to that comment before I move on? Well, anyone can make a comment. Okay. Ms. Nguyen, looks like you're up on this list.
Okay. I like the idea of scholarships for those who have need. I think that the foundation does a good job of doing that. Again, I think if we think back to the last conversation, we're in, we're in unprecedented times. So I don't think this was a, it was to boost enrollment, to Dr. Fisher's point. But I also think it was, the government just sent out billions of dollars to people in our country because the country as a whole has been destabilized. And we are trying to enroll people into college at a time where we haven't quite righted the ship. And so I think when we say our students don't need the money, students that maybe didn't need the money six months ago, I believe that right now, the jobs that they had may not even be there to go back to while they're going to college. So I. may not even be there to go back to while they're going to college. So I, I'd like to see us, um, maybe take a little bit broader look at what we're doing. I don't disagree with, um, Dr. Thor's input. I, I, I believe we need to, to target certain programs and, and promote programs that people can come to our college and immediately get workforce jobs. I think that's critical. Um, but I also think, and we need to be responsible to what the community is saying that they need. Um, obviously, medical and our nursing programs, and if we can provide, um, and accelerate the, the waiting list, um, maybe that could attract more students. But, but I, before we throw out six A and six B, I think it was a one-time thing. Um, yes, we would be doubling, but, but if we, we make it very clear that it's a one-time thing due to economic circumstances, that we're providing a fifty percent discount. Um, I, I believe that that, you make that message clear, but I, I do believe that this time in our country and in our community, um, there's gonna be more people that need, have that need. Um, and so I, before we totally throw out six A and six B, I, I, I think we really have to look at, um, the job loss situation, and, and are our students going to be able to afford college even at fifty percent if they don't have a supplemental job to go back to? Um, and I think that we were bridging a gap, uh, with six A and six B. I wouldn't want to continue it. I wouldn't want to continue it past this next school year, but I do think that we're in a transitional time and we're phasing back up. Um, and because of the riots the last few days, uh, businesses that were open had to shut back down. Um, I hope that that doesn't continue, but, but I think we have to be a little bit more responsible and sensitive to where the community is at financially. And, uh, that's why I like six A and six B. But I do, um, I did appreciate Dr. Thor's feedback, and, um, I would be more inclined to continue with six A and six B at this point, but I'm listening to what everyone else's input is. So, thank you.
Sure. Um, any comments there before I move to Mr. Hendrix? Being none, uh, Mr. Hendrix?
Um, as far as six A and six B, I'm not strongly opposed to them, but I'm not strongly supportive either. Um, I guess I'd like to hear some other options. Uh, the comments we've heard sound good. I don't really have a suggestion for an option myself, but I guess I'd like to see some other options from staff or from other board members.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments before we move on?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Um, Dr. Thor, I'm going to move past you initially. Um, of course, I know you, you probably have lots of ideas, and go to Dr. Narini.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Yeah, we were asking if there is, uh, any research or data. Uh, I think there's volumes. Uh, Vincent Tinto, Metzner Bean have all done, uh, enormous amount of, of research and studying on, on college retention and, and, um, enrollment. And they all say pretty much the same thing, that student integration and student involvement are the keys to, to enrollment. And I think this is a great opportunity, uh, as, as Dr. Thor was saying, is to, and what I said last time, is to look at our long-term goals and develop a robust enrollment and retention programs so that we, we can not only, uh, recruit, but also retain the students, because, you know, they, like the, the old blues song, it's cheaper to keeper, uh, cheaper to keep the students than to, to enroll new ones. And you, and you're right. I mean, I think money i- is an issue, but also it's the intimidation that the students face. The intimidation of the application process, the financial aid process, and the enrollment process. I, I go through this every day with my students, and these are students who have somebody there that they can ask those quote-unquote silly questions to. So I'm thinking about the, the students that, that Mr. Sars is talking about, and some of the other students, uh, we're talking about, the older students who are already at, at a disadvantage. They're already thinking, well, I, I'm too old to go back to school. I, I, I should already know this. And, and that's why, and we, we ask about the, the other for-profit schools, why are they up? They're up because of consistent, ongoing support that they give the students, just like our embedded counselors. The, the consistent, ongoing support where, where they walk them, hold their hand, step by step by step, all the way through, to get them there and then keep them there. And that's what we, I mean, we're, we're asking about what our goals are. I think this is a great, this, this is, this would be a wonderful sugar high, um, and it, it may, it may increase our enrollment for once, but what kind of taste is it gonna leave in our, our mouths afterwards, and, and the students' mouths afterwards? The other thing we have to keep in mind, and, and Dr. Fisher, maybe you can help me with this a little bit. The way I understand financial aid to work in the FAFSA and the Pell Grant, students get, uh, a hundred and fifty percent time to, to use. So that means if they're, if they're getting an associate's degree, they have two, four, six semesters of financial aid that they get, or six semesters of Pell Grant. If they're going for a, a bachelor's degree, they got, what is it, twelve semesters of, of Pell Grant to get. And so if we reduce the tuition, and this is where, I, I think, Dr. Fisher, you mentioned this last week about last dollar in and being careful how we incentivize the students, is that if they're using a semester of Pell Grant for a half-price class that is gonna be two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, that they're not gonna be able to use if they transfer to a university, if they, if they go on too long, uh, if they're taking more semesters than the, the hundred-and-fifty percent, then we put them at a disadvantage on, at the back end. Uh, so we had, we had to be careful of, of some of those unintended consequences that, that we have. But again, if we were to, if we were to do a, a robust outreach to the students, where we make sure that we, we have that model where, where the students have a, a, a person that is gonna help them, walk them through the process, sit them down in front of the computer, have them put in their name, address, social security, everything they need to do, then our enrollment will go up as long as we ma- make sure that we maintain that support once they get to the campus, making sure that their, their enrollment, uh, process happens, their registration happens, how they, uh, how do they access tutoring, how do they access the, the resources that they need? So I, I think this is, this situation that we're facing, the covert, the, the drop in enrollment, the opportunity that we have here to build a robust outreach program is, it's, it's, it's an opportunity. And, and we need to look at, at kind of the long-term consequences of, of whatever, whatever we do. Um, but yeah, I, I would like to keep, you know, keep going through with six A and six B and see where that gets us, but I, I'm, I'm a big advocate of, you know, making sure that we, we're looking at the long run and not just the, the sugar high, the, the short run.
Thank you, Dr. Narini. Um, so my turn, and then I'll go, go backwards. Uh, for me, it's been an interesting review of thinking through six A, six B a little more, and also harkening back to some of my experiences that in tough times for people who wanted to enroll, for example, in job training programs and, and those. It wasn't difficult often for people to find WIWA dollars or other opportu- financial opportunities, for example, to put them into training programs. The challenge then went back to how, for example, did we sustain people in programs? And that goes back to Mr. Sars' point, that so many of the folks entering or wanting to come to school have other financial considerations. So certainly, having a place to live is an issue for an, a student if they have a family. And granted, I recognize that we have students who live in cars, which is unconscionable, um, or are homeless, and that is devastating. And that also reinforces that they've made an intention, or they're on a scholarship perhaps, to be attending to their education, and that's secondary. But for many people, that's not. They have things to consider, such as food, how will they afford the computer, the textbook, et cetera. So as I was thinking through these models, there are a couple of things that came to my mind. One is, it would certainly be, um, attractive, and I suppose somewhat of an in- incentive to offer some percentage of reduced tuition. I'm not sure fifty percent is it, maybe it has to be considered worthwhile, and that's why we thought, again, of fifty percent. Um, but also, if we're willing to spend the money to, for tuition reduction, what about shifting some of our resources to at least two of the funds that exist under the foundation? One, which provides the emergency fund assistance for anyone who does need to, uh, and maybe recalibrate it for the, a certain group where they do need support for their, to, uh, housing or their food or, or some such thing. And the other one, of course, attends to the textbook, the technology needs, et cetera, so that we could offset some of the costs that folks are incurring to, to be attracted in the first place and then sustaining themselves. I am, um, also thinking short-term versus long-term. Absolutely, marketing's part of it, but I'm not hearing that we're, maybe we're not robust enough, and certainly that's the place to go, but we can always do better. I mean, that's always the comment. And perhaps accepting that our tuition, or, excuse me, our, um, attendance enrollment is going to be lower than we might have anticipated, uh, or maybe it's somewhere in between the worst-case scenario and flat. I mean, we might have to just bite the bullet and accept some of that, um, and suffer, suffer the revenue consequences there. So I guess, not because I, I'm looking for a compromise, but I, I'm trying to think of how do we both meet a short-term goal in several ways to attract students? How do we perhaps evaluate course reduction for the programs that lead to more quick, uh, long, uh, shorter-term certificates that will help people find jobs more quickly versus those are in long-term programs? And then creates a model by which people can access, uh, some funds to support their needs, either through scholarships or others as they're enrolling. I can't ignore the fact that many people do find the processes intimidating. I remember even in my day finding, oh my gosh, I have to do all that, but, um, that's neither here nor there. So there, the long-term piece are all the elements that go into market, or sustained marketing, sustaining a student while they're going through any program to address their financial, as well as their well-being concerns. And then, um, the other approaches. But when we were looking at this, we need to just shift. I mean, there are people that need work now and who need their certificates to get to work now. Those may be the people that are the most in need, which goes back to more, perhaps those credit hours or their certificate programs, and we do something there. And I realize I'm being long-winded. I'm just trying to, to think of how do we embrace the short-term goal to support increased enrollment and ensure that we're not jeopardizing people's futures by thinking that if we only get, if we give them the reduction now, they're not gonna need the reduction next year. And so what are the other ways that we can provide more immediate support that supports enrollment, but without exclusively being a tuition reduction? So, that's my comment. So with that, Dr. Thor, back to you.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Um, I, uh, like what I just heard, uh, from you. Um, I wanna make it clear that in my earlier comments, I wasn't suggesting that there aren't students who have, uh, financial needs and require some financial support. Uh, you, we talked about the current, you know, twenty-five percent enrollment decline compared to same point in time a year ago. But another way to look at it is that in the middle of a pandemic, with unemployment at the levels of the Great Depression, uh, you know, with a, uh, an economy in shambles, uh, seventy-five percent of people, uh, of people who enrolled a year ago are enrolled this year. I mean, in some ways, that is actually really good news, given the uncertainties, uh, of the times and the fact that students are enrolling without knowing exactly what we're going to be, uh, uh, offering them in the fall, uh, whether we're back to normal or some version of normal or no normal. Um, so I think we also have to anticipate that there's going to be more federal money coming. Uh, I think we all got the notice from ACCT, uh, earlier this week on the points that they're pushing, which includes, uh, more direct aid, uh, to students. Uh, we're also hearing at the federal level, a discussion of more general stimulus checks out to, uh, to the, the public. So, uh, you know, besides what we're doing, I think there is going to be, uh, more coming forward. I also think we have seventy million dollars in unrestricted reserves, and we have to think, uh, comprehensively about that money. Uh, because we are going to have, uh, decreased revenue. Uh, it will, would be a miracle if we don't. Uh, so we're going to have to dip into that seventy million to help address that. Uh, you know, an undiscussable, uh, uh, is the fact that many other higher education institutions are now making plans or at least having discussions about furloughs and reduction in force and so on. Uh, part of what's between us in having to have those discussions is that seventy million dollars. So I just wanna be really sure that we're being smart about this. Uh, because we could throw that whole seventy million dollars at tuition reduction and not have the enrollment, and then we're really up the creek. So, uh, I, my bias, my bias is to, um, to make, uh, some institutional aid available to students in a simplified process carried out either by the foundation or by our financial aid offices for students that have been directly impacted by the, the pandemic and the other, uh, uh, circumstances surrounding that. Uh, you know, did you lose your job? Have you had reduced hours, whatever, and, uh, and then assist them. Um, and that we, uh, take some money to increase, uh, our marketing and so on. I remember, I, I appreciate Ms. Myers and others' comment that, uh, people do know our colleges, but, but I remember, uh, many years ago, when I was president of West Los Angeles College, and I was walking by the Learning Resources Center, which was the library and other support services to students. And there was, um, a man, uh, standing there staring at the building, and I asked him if I could help him. And he said, you know, something to the effect that I'm forty-eight years old and I just, uh, lost my job, and I need to get some skills. And he's looking at this building, Learning Resource Center, and he says, can anybody go in that building? And I said, oh my goodness. And, uh, I mean, after that, we put up signs that said, welcome, you know, come on in, and so on. So I don't think, you know, that we should assume, uh, uh, as, as you indicated, Mrs. Sullivan, that, that people know how to navigate, uh, our systems or that, uh, they even know, uh, you know, what we have to offer, and particularly the financial aid that might be available to them.
Mrs. Sullivan? Yes?
Hi, um, it's Mrs. Ben. I just wanted to, in, in light of what Dr. Thor said and, and what Mrs. McGrath had asked, and I think Dr. Narini touched on, just as a way of, of facts, we have, uh, received five thousand nine hundred and sixty-one applications from the foundation for scholarships this year, which is up fifty-five percent from the same time last year. So just know that, um, just as a guiding, just so we have that, so people know that as they're just trying to make their decision. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Well, um, so I've heard a blend of, uh, well, I've heard a few things. There are a number of you who are still okay, I think was the operative word, with six A, six B. I've also heard, uh, it's, so probably we need a little more information on that. I've heard of variations on the theme, uh, of perhaps changing the percentage. One of the things that I do think is important is, uh, one of Mr. Sars' concerns, and that is the issue around, uh- and that is the issue around the credit hour folks. And I also think, again, if our goal is to offer incentives through tuition to get to work through an education path more quickly, that perhaps we we will kind of separate, even though that sounds biased, separate the elements of the program, you know, the programs, which ones are which? And do we make adjustments accordingly unless that's too complicated financially? And the other issue I heard in that, and Mrs. Lynn, thank you very much for the information. I think that if there's a way for us to have an opportunity to direct some funds to marketing and then also to supporting students, I heard that from our student trustee as a matter of fact. So we're kind of in a number of places and we need to get to one. One of the reasons I postponed a decision today is because I thought it was important to have this conversation and then we can vote. So you all need to help me get to one. But with that, Dr. Fisher, can you quickly go through the 6A, 6B so that there's additional knowledge then on that? Since I've heard more people say they want more information on that than fewer?
Absolutely. Miss Sullivan, members of the board, before we move off the guiding principles, I'd just like to point out once again that these are things that we would be looking at regardless of which track we decide to go down in terms of supporting our students financially. We have a real commitment within the institution to focus on student equity and to understand that our students come from a variety and a diverse backgrounds and walks of life and needs. And their needs change over time, and certainly in this changing environment, they change. So finding ways to help students that in ways that make sense for them specifically, as opposed to flat rates across the board, is something that we hold in in high principle. We want to foster continued academic momentum always towards degree completion. We want to encourage increased FAFSA completion. Right now, we're sitting at about 34% of our our students completing a FAFSA. Whatever we do in our in our marketing campaign around this kind of support, it would be really important for us to try to use that as a way to drive more FAFSA completion. There's a lot of dollars that get left on the table for our students that are not our institutional dollars, but they're certainly there specifically to help students. We want to protect our financial aid availability, student's eligibility and status, as was mentioned earlier. Maximize savings for students while supporting MCCD. Dr. Thor, I think, mentioned the desire to not have to end up with furloughs. If part of the goal is to support our economy, then certainly us putting our own employees out of work is not going to further that goal. So we want to try to balance savings for students while also supporting our institution. And of course, we want to maintain our brand equity. Heard marketing mentioned several times, and we've spent a lot of time and effort in building our brand equity, not only for the district as a whole, but more specifically for the colleges as high quality options. And so if we're going to do something specifically around a reduction in tuition, then we want to be sensitive that we maintain that high quality branding and just talk about adding support in a challenging time. Next slide. Now, this is a very complicated slide, and so I'm going to unpack it for just a minute. There's a second slide. I know you all have seen the PowerPoint that talks about the spring semester, but the model is the same. All part time students would benefit from a tuition rate of no more than $42.50 a credit hour. And that that would be both our self pay and our financial aid students. So with a 50% tuition, give back tuition credit, nobody would end up paying more than that 4250. Financial aid students would apply Pell Grant and frankly, other grants, with presidential grants and Maricopa grants. But all grant dollars that are free dollars to the student would be applied to their regular tuition first. If they have any remaining tuition due, then the 50% would apply to that. So significantly reducing their their burden for tuition as well. And then all full time students would benefit from what we've been calling the flat rate full time. And when we talked about this at the work session last week, you know, we went back and forth, should that be full time of 15 credit hours, which is what we think of when we think full time to completion, on time completion? Or should it be 12 hours, which is the full time that we think about for financial aid? And that feels much more doable for our students who take an average of 7.5 credit hours. And so we landed that last week on 12 hours. And we'll come back to this discussion point about whether that 12 or 15 makes sense as we began to do the math and work through the model. There's there's a discussion that probably needs to be had with the board, but let's let's put that aside for just one minute and move through the rest of the presentation, and then we can come back to that if that's all right. The next slide is for spring 2021. When we talked last week, we wanted to do a 25% reduction. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I have a cat issue on my desk. Thank you. So we wanted to do a 25% reduction in spring 2021. And that means no student or for our continuing students only, again, this was to derive completion. And so for continuing part time students, no, no student would pay more than $63.75 per credit hour. That means our self pay students, again, would get the 25% off their total tuition due. And our financial aid students would apply their grants and then receive their tuition credit on any remaining tuition due. Again, we would apply the flat rate full time at the 12 hour rate. And we'll come back again to these two slides in just a moment to talk through whether the 12 or the 15 makes more sense. Next slide. We we looked at several different ways of implementing the 50 and 25%. And we really were concerned about equity, you know, and we talk a lot about the difference between equal and equality in equity within our institution, particularly through transformation and our guided pathways journey. So, you know, the difference being that treating everyone equal means giving everybody the same. Well, that's that's seems fair on the surface. But equity is really about giving students, giving everyone what they actually need to succeed. And so we feel like this model, rather than applying 50% just straight across the board, this one really treats both self pay and financial aid students equitably according to their unique situations. So all students receive 50% off any out of pocket tuition due. We're offering special tuition reduction as a financial support rather than reducing the actual sticker price, because that actually protects the financial aid loan availability. And we talked about that a little bit last week. This is a model that universities have used for time memorial, that that they always leave their list price up, their sticker price up, and then they work back from that within their financial aid packaging. And that's to protect the availability of financial aid in terms of loans, but also scholarships, outside scholarships that students might apply for. And then students who receive their full Pell Grant will receive their residual balance, just as they always have. So students on full Pell Grant would not see their life change at all in this. And then finally, it encourages that full time aspiration without penalizing part time students. We wanted to make sure that it was a balanced program. So every student could benefit in ways that made sense in their unique situation. Next slide. And so, of course, there's a budget impact for the institution. The impact that we estimated for the tuition reduction in this particular model in fall 2020 would be $24.9 million and in spring would be $14.9 million. This model allows the Pell, the Title IV Federal Financial Aid, to continue to support both students and our institution as usual. If we chose to apply the 50% straight across the board and not have grants taken into consideration before the discount, for each semester, it would be $37.1 million of budget impact. Next slide. We talked a lot about marketing and how might we get messages out? These are some examples. I encourage you not to wordsmith at this point. These are the the first blush, as as happens when you're creating a marketing campaign. But thinking through, how can we, again, maintain our brand equity? Maintain the idea that we're a high quality provider while talking about the savings that we could provide. So maximum learning and maximum saving at the same time. And then pay no more than 50% of your tuition this fall guaranteed. And that's a guarantee we could make to, again, part time, full time, self pay or financial aid students. Next slide. Another take on a different, a different way of thinking about it. This would be the flat rate full time. So pay less, learn more and get there faster. So as we looked it up across the board, we could say a full semester for less than the price of one university class. That's a pretty, I think someone said last semester or last week, sexy message. That's a pretty sexy message for students, particularly those that might be thinking about going to a university that's only going to be online. So this this could be a way of really targeting those students. Also target that so both those that are coming out of high school, but those that are already at a university and might want to be continuing their semester, but perhaps could do it for significantly less money. And then final slide is just thinking through where we might be putting our promotions for this kind of marketing. So whether you go with tuition discounts in this model, regardless of the amount. If we do flat rate full time, then these were some of the channels that we would use to get that out. I'm not going to belabor the point. You've seen presentations from our marketing department, they're they're quite successful. I think we mentioned earlier that our leads for this year are actually up year over year. So we're getting more students responding. I think Dr. Thor mentioned it's it's somewhat surprising, even the amount of students that have already signed up. But our leads are are showing us that there are, there's a demand out there that we need to tap into and get in the door. Marketing is in the process of creating a video that will help students understand what fall will look like for them. Because that's what we're hearing is that students are just waiting. There's just a lot of anxiety around what will fall be for me. And so if we can help them understand what it would be for them if they were with us, that's something we want to do and do soon. The final slide actually is just a question slide as always. So to open it back up, Ms. Sullivan, turn it back to you.
Thank you, and you provided a lot of information. And I I'm I'm here, I'm not trying to stumble here. I I also heard that maybe there is some opportunity for compromise. Before I go to questions, Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any comments to add?
Mrs. Sullivan, members of the board, and in hearing from each of the board members, I'm trying to take a piece of what seems to be the interest in each of the thoughts from various board members. Perhaps what I'm hearing is that maybe we should think about an opportunity rather than a 50% for the fall, that maybe we we think about a 25% for for the fall semester and a 25% for the continuing student in the spring. And then we take those savings in rather than using the 50%. I'm going to estimate that that may be a $10 million saving in that. And then we apply that, we set that aside for institutional funding, where it gives us a greater latitude to to help out those students that have other needs, you know, to help them to stay in school. And then we we use some of that set aside as well to infuse into our marketing programs as our, as Ms. Maya indicated and and Mr. Sarr indicated, that some of our programs need to be marketed better, more specific across the valley. And then, you know, for the longer term, I really think that we need to be thinking about how we reallocate existing resources to increase the number of navigators and to increase the number of embedded advisors in our in our local school districts to continue to build out the population of students that are going to come to us. And when they do come, we can, we can replicate the type of service that our for profits are providing, as Dr. Narini described. That is one of the primary differences that students experience when going into a for profit model versus ours is the level of of a support from the second that they click a link on a website that expresses interest. They typically will get a call within minutes and then they're like a dog on a bone after that relentless pursuit of ensuring that that student enrolls. I think where we where we definitely beat the for profits is in the quality of education that we provide, the experience our students have once they're with us. And we see higher retention rates when compared to our for profits for that. So if we can just beat them on the getting the student in, then then it's a win all the way around for us. That's that's what I'm hearing. I don't know what the appetite is for the rest of the board in considering that. But that might give us a way to to take all of the interests that I'm hearing and couple, bring that into a proposed model here.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Yes, did I'm just then go, is that you, Dr. Fisher?
It is.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may, just to add on to Gentsel Gonzalez's comments. The other thing that that I've heard some support for and particularly support within our institution is the idea of flat rate full time. If we did it without the discount at $85 a credit hour, even at 12 hours, we can still use the same marketing message. It's still a full semester for the cost of a university class and would have minimal impact on our budget and help us continue to message the full time to finish to our students. So I think I think there's some real win wins there that we could get done at the same time without the huge budgetary impact. And I know it has a lot of support internally. Just wanted to add that to the mix.
Okay. So we've heard essentially 6A, 6B with the modification and shifting monies to the concerns that several of you have raised. And I'm going to jump to you, Mr. Hendricks, because you said you were in the middle on success, I have an exact quote here. You said you wanted to consider other options. So does this meet any of your interests?
I don't know that I have specific interest. I'm I'm concerned about 6A and 6B where they apply to everyone, because I think our goal is to increase tuition and increase success rates of our students. And I'm looking at 6A and 6B, one person that 6A and 6B would apply to is me. And I don't think I'm one of the target market. And if I could take, say, a golf class for half price, I probably would. And I don't think that's the student we're after. So that's one of my problems with 6A and 6Bs. I think there's a lot of people that would take advantage of that that aren't a target we're trying to help.
Dr. Gonzalez or Dr. Fisher, do you have a comment to that?
Mrs. Sullivan, Mr. Hendricks, that that's an excellent point. And in that, you know, there's, there's no reason why we couldn't continue to think about how we target specific programs in this. You're right, this would apply. You know, there's, we've heard a couple of reasons on why we're doing this. One is to help our 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 community that is suffering economically. And we've also heard this as a strategy to increase enrollment. Now, that that golf, that person that's taking a golf class does contribute to increased enrollment. But we're also looking for to really help that student in the end that, you know, would would turn into increased skill set and increasing their ability to to secure, you know, a sustainable career. So I I I agree, and I hear what I hear what you're saying.
And I'm not criticizing golf or anything else. I'm just, that's just me personally. If I could do something for essentially free, I might be more inclined to go do it. But I'm not going to be a long term student. I'm not going to take it to get some golf certificate or anything else. I'm I'm just going to go down and take advantage of a free opportunity. And I think there's a lot of people that would probably take a class, maybe even start a class and drop it halfway through, because after they get in it, they're going to say, hey, I thought this would be fun, but it's really not. I think our goal is to increase enrollment, to retrain people that need jobs, to put people in the workforce. And when I first saw 6A and 6B, I thought, hey, that sounds great. But after our meeting, I started thinking more about it. What really was getting at me is myself, my wife, my kids. And everybody was making comments, hey, if I could take a class for 25 bucks, you know, I'd go down and study basket weaving or just whatever your hot button happens to be. Maybe my one son said he always wanted to take a chemistry class, but he's not going to take it with any idea of going to work. He just thought it'd be kind of cool. And I think that's the wrong target. And maybe that's such a small percentage that it doesn't matter. That's why I say I'm not necessarily opposed to 6A and 6B. I'm just thinking there might be I'm just thinking whether it might be more fine-tuned options that would be better. I, I guess we got to decide. In my mind, I'm thinking our goal is to increase enrollment, increase graduation rate, increase certificates produced. Increase people upgrading their employment. And so that, that would be the target. So I guess I'm thinking there might be a better system, even number five. We didn't really get into five as to in detail what that meant. But some sort of a scholarship program that could be targeted based on need or, or based on coursework. I mean, I'd asked the question last week of how would that be administrated? And we talked about we just run it through financial aid and, and that's kind of a broad answer. But I'm talking a lot of money to qualify people or programs to use and then distribute it. So I think we'd have to look at, are we set up to do that type of a program? But anyway, I, I don't have a clear idea. Here's what I think we should do. I just think we can do better than six A and six B.
So to that point, then, Dr. Gonzalez, you mentioned a modi, you've mentioned two modifications. And with your comments also, Dr. Fisher, to six A and six B. One, given the, the guiding principles, you are looking at the equity issue. And one of the issues then that you recommended on, besides dealing, not dealing with the 50% going to a 25%, that's a modification. The other one is that you mentioned is the idea of targeting particular courses perhaps, or maybe it should be the other way around excluding, depending on what percentage of folks are involved to your, your question or comment, Mr. Hendricks. So that would be a modification. So I, so instead of looking at it in its original form, using that sort of model and thinking through how to satisfy both of those goals. That's what I'm hearing in your modification. That does address Mr. Hendricks' concern. The institutional funding goes to those in need who have other, an additional needs and, and the support. And then certainly the marketing that has been brought up a couple of times. So board members, I'm, so that's what we have because we do have to reach the model. We have about 15 more minutes for this conversation before this work session ends. And we need to give the Dr. Gonzalez and his team further direction. So we have something to look at on Tuesday. Or maybe look at before, and then if we're going to move forward with any of this, take action next Tuesday. So at this point, rather than calling on you specifically, who has comments?
If I may, this is Dr. Norene.
Yes, go.
Uh, yeah, I, just a quick comment. I mean, I, I agree with, with Mr. Hendricks about the, the equity issue and, and Mrs., Dr. Fisher about the equity issue. I think that's really important that we, we look at that and make sure it is equitable to those who needed to, to bring them up to, to par. And then as far as the, the marketing campaign, I think we really need to focus on the quality and not just the price. You know, we, we offer some high-quality courses and high-quality education. We just happen to be affordable. And then, you know, with the, again, with the marketing, you know, getting them to the door is one thing. We just have to make sure that that door is not sticky and, and they can get through that door. And that's where we need that, the support for the students. Uh, once we get them to the door through the, the application process, the, the FAFSA completion is, is critical, critical to, to getting some of this done. And we need to make sure that there's, that we have the support for those students to do that. The only, the other thing, it, I, I think, you know, if we look at that, the 25%, is that my?
Yeah.
If we look at the 25%, I, I don't know what that is. If, if we can couch it in, in a scholarship or we can count it, couch it in such a way that it's a incentive to get students to enroll as, whether it's a scholarship or a grant or however we want to couch it, so that when our, our outreach people are out there recruiting, you know, it, it show, it looks like it's more of a, an incentive. We want you and here's, here's what we're able to do to, to get you there. Yeah, the last thing I wanted to add, and I, I'm afraid, I don't want to throw this in at the end, but we had talked about this before, for out-of-state students, again, we're one of the fastest-growing counties in the state. So we have a lot of out-of-state students here. So we had talked about reducing the out-of-state surcharge for those students who are taking less than six credits. And I'd like to, to consider that as well. So that it becomes more affordable for, for those out-of-state students who are here, who've moved here to, who plan to be residents, but they just haven't been able to meet the, the residency requirement. But maybe consider, consider a, a discounted search leverage for, for those who are taking less than six credits. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, go ahead.
Ms. Sullivan, Dr. Norene, as we look at the data around out-of-state students, if we can find a way to target those who would be new to college to us. Otherwise, we would be creating an incentive for the students, the many more students that take more than six credit hours to drop their credit hours. Or, and/or to, for those that do take six, to drop their price. So certainly we can look at a model for new-to-college students that are coming from out-of-state if that's of interest.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, I was just looking at, yeah, just the out-of-state students in general who are, are taking six, just like we had it back in 2010 and 2011. The model that we used back then for those, for those students.
Thank you. I'm, okay, so I'm sure there are other comments. I'm expecting, Dr. Thor, you have comments, then Mr. Sarr.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. First, I want to weigh in on the flat rate. I do think, also think that's a very good idea. I think 12 credits is the appropriate cutoff. Because I think we probably have students who are taking 12 credits. But if an additional three would not cost them anymore, would increase their low to 15. Which is really where we want full-time students to be, so that they will complete a degree in four semesters or two years. So I, I want to support that. I also want to make sure I understand our, I want to be reassured that we are not jeopardizing the Pell Grants in any way. So I, if, if I understand what you said, Dr. Fisher, that we believe the sticker price, if you will, the same. So as far as the Fed are concerned in terms of, of determining Pell Grant awards. They're looking at $85 a credit hour. And then after the Pell is applied and any other financial aid that a student has received. Then we would give them a credit that could be up to as much as whatever percentage we decide to use, 25% or 50%. It seems to me, if they, if that's what you're saying, that we're going to have to be very careful about how we are wording our publicity on this. So as to not have the feds come back and say we misrepresented to them what our tuition actually is. I, I hope you understood the gist of my, my question.
Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Thor. That is correct. The 25% that financial aid students would receive would be off any tuition remaining. So they would get the same discount as any other student on tuition due. And yes, their probably Pell would be protected and they would still get, those that are on full Pell would still get their residual payment per normal.
So in our advertising though, we, we couldn't then advertise our tuition as $42.50 a credit hour.
That's correct.
Instead, we'd have to say.
We can say you won't pay more than this guaranteed.
Yeah, yeah, you won't pay more than 50%. Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, I got it. Okay, I got it.
Thank you.
My follow-up to Dr. Thor is, are you amenable to a modification if we went for a six A, six B to 25%? Or are you, where, where are you on that?
Wouldn't be my first choice. Because again, I believe that while we do have students that need that support and they come back to us if that support's available. I don't think that all people need it. There's a whole lot of people out there who do still have their jobs. And actually, because of stimulus checks and so on, are better off than, than they were before. And there's, there's a cost to us to doing this. And it, that is the further reduction of the fund balances, which we may desperately need to address budget shortfalls and pressures to furlough or reduce in force our employees.
And if there was a caveat that it went either to certain programs or whatever, you're still in that position. Is that what I understand? I, I mean, you don't have to be absolute definitive. I'm just kind of getting a guidance here because we need to guide administration what to do next.
I, I, I can't, I, I need to think about it some more. I really think that that one of our goals needs to be to support getting people back to work in areas of high demand. And that, so either through marketing or through how we're discounting those programs, we need to be encouraging people into them. And we need to be looking at how we deliver them. Are we delivering them as quickly as we can through academies, bootcamps, and some of those kinds of things?
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sarr?
No comment.
Okay, do you have any more to say about clock hours?
I'm disappointed that we haven't talked about it.
And how would you, Dr. Fisher, how would you see those being accommodated?
We can certainly extend whichever model to those courses. If you'd like to see a particular model, Mr. Sarr, it'd be helpful to have some guidance.
You know, Dr. Thor and others have said that we need to get people to work. And the best chances of those people getting better jobs or end jobs are through certificates, not for your degrees. And we're not addressing that. So until you can assure me that, that we are making accommodations to get people through their certificate programs in, in the most efficient and timely manner. You know, I don't think any of this is going to work.
I would support some evaluation of addressing that because I do think it's not just the enrollment piece that also is the go-get-to-work piece. So I would encourage you, if you have the, the time ability to include something in some model.
Yes, ma'am.
So that'll be, let's see, Mrs. Nguyen, do you have any other comments?
I do. I like incentivizing for full-time students. I think that so however we get there, whether it's 25%, 50%, 40%, whatever that model looks like. I also had the same concern about if we paid for education. I, I had a conversation with Mr. Yacinto. Do we give up anything with our funding mechanism from the federal government? And he assured me that we do not. But I, I, I think as I look at the marketing, we were promoting price. I, I think out of everything that the marketing you presented, Ms. Fisher, or Dr. Fisher, is to get there faster. We want to be able to meet the needs of our community and, and the, the next one. And, and I think so. I think the most important things on these ads were a full semester for less than the price of one university class. Now, that may change, so we want to be careful that we don't promote something that we can't deliver. The other one said pay no more than 50% of your tuition this fall guaranteed. Because there'll be some nuance. And, and I know you said don't word Smith, but I just want to make sure we don't legally obligate ourselves to something that we can't deliver. So I, I'm not attached to six A and six B. It sounds like we've kind of, even though we're not confirmed, it sounds like we're more six B-ish now. I do think we need to offer some kind of discount and some kind of incentive. The reason that we went down this path is that our enrollment numbers were down. Over the last week, they've bounced up and we're doing great, then we don't need to have this discussion. But if our enrollment numbers are still down and you don't like six A and six B. We don't have a lot of time. So I'd like us to kind of convalesce about what we do want. Maybe we need some more information, but we need to come to some kind of conclusion as, so we can get students. And to Mr. Hendricks' point, do I want someone there for a golf course? Probably not, but if we start to bring people back to the college, that, then we have a captive audience and maybe then they have people in their lives. And we're reintroducing the community college system back to our community. So if it does provide that, I don't think we lose in that scenario. But we have to be responsible to where our community is at. Our colleges are exceptional. We are providing over-the-top education. It has a value. But if we can give that to our community right now at this time of need, then we're the heroes in the story. And I think that's what our job is right now, is to engage people with our community college for a reasonable price. And then my last thing is the marketing $10 million set aside. I'd want to know more about that. Like, what are you going to use that for? What kind of marketing? You kind of went over it here, but if we're setting that aside because we're not giving as great a reduction, where does that money go? How does it get distributed? I'd want to know more about that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath, you're, you're saving the best for last here. Mrs. McGrath, are you present? Hello? I'm sure Mrs. McGrath is still on, online. Tina, is she there?
As far as we can tell, she's connected and her audio is connected. She's not muted.
Okay. Well, I have a couple of things then. Another thing that came up, Dr. Gonzalez, and I know probably with Dr. Fisher and others, you've addressed this. And to implement a program of that has all of these pieces. Do you feel that it can function within the current framework of the colleges? Or would you feel that you would have to create more, another department or something to manage this? That has come up as a question.
If I may, Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, please.
All of these that we've presented, we can implement within the functions that we have. The 25% reduction for the two semesters or 50% or whatever we end up with there. That's the most time-consuming and work-intensive piece. The flat rate full-time. And the scholarships or, or special needs functions through financial aid. We have established a different process by which we did CARES Act. Not to say that we would need the same criteria for, for disseminating those dollars. But we have the functions within the institution. We would not need to add additional people or, or much in the way of business process, other than for the 25% off. Because that's simply not something that we've done in the past.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs., I, I appreciate that. Mrs. McGrath, are you there now? I thought I heard you.
Yes, I'm, I've been here all the time.
Okay. Do you have more comments?
I keep wondering why we want to spend the money, if we really need to spend the money. Because it doesn't sound to me like it's going to do a lot of good. I think we're going to lose students no matter what we do. And I think we need to brace up and face reality. And I think we need to start making plans for bumping up against the expenditure limit. I think
I think we need, I don't know what the expenditure limit is for students, but if we lose a quarter of our students, I think we will have expenditure limit problems, because as I understand it, we're very close to bumping up against the top limit. So I'm wondering if maybe staff could be looking at that and figuring that out, because we're going to have to start cutting expenditures. You know, I just, maybe reality is we lose students, period, no matter what we do.
Okay, thank you. So we've hit 5:30. Dr. Gonzalez, I guess I'm hearing still a little bit of breadth to this discussion, but we do have in front of us the six A, six B model with more comments tied to the six B. I know this all takes effort, but if we could look at something that is tied to your recommendation or what you heard, similar with the 25%, but the redirection of monies to support folks with their barriers and other things through institutional fundings. The other issue was maybe being more targeted in where this goes or investigating a little further what percentage of students do the golf, quote unquote. Or do we want to create targeted models of tuition? So what are you hearing and what do you take away as your next step?
President Sullivan, members of the board, what I take away?
Clock hours, sorry, sorry. I forgot to throw in the clock hours. Go ahead.
Including the clock hours. I, in what I'm hearing, I still think about the idea that I shared earlier that seems to represent the multiple interests. And I think we can take that and even modify that slightly and hopefully have something back. I don't know if it would be possible to have it by Thursday. We'll try really hard to get that to you for review and clearly not later than Monday. That does our best attempt to meet as many interests as we've heard here this evening.
Okay, yeah, I know that Thursday may be a push. I forgot last time that you've moved to the 10-hour workday instead of eight-hour workday with Friday being. Anyway, so whatever you can do, certainly we would appreciate that. Gives us an opportunity. We will then have something to review prior to the board meeting on Tuesday for any action. And if there's any further need for a board member to have specific information, Dr. Fisher, do they contact you?
Yes, please.
Okay, and then any answer could be shared with all of us on the board. That might enhance whatever it is that we receive from all of you. And my dog is starting to bark, which must be telling me it's 5:31 or 33. So with that, are there any other questions for the good of the order from board members?
Yes, I'm McGrath here.
Yes, Ms. McGrath.
What the expenditure limit is and are we close to it? Should we be worried about that? Because that's something mandated by law and we don't just decide whether we abide by it or not. So I'm wondering if we could, staff could inform us as to what the expenditure limits are.
Perfect. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. It was captured in my notes. So thank you, of course. Any other questions? And being that, and certainly Ms. Maya, if you have any further comments, please share them with Dr. Fisher or anyone from the student perspective. That's important. And also Dana, since you're also a student, that's also important. With that then being 5:34, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. So thank you all. Have a pleasant evening. And you'll be hearing further. Thank you.